Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's work session for the Portsmouth Planning Board. There are, I believe, two items on the agenda. There's a brief primer on city enforcement of zoning and land use regulations. And I believe there's an overview of LEED for neighborhood development rating systems. And I believe first, David, we're starting with Attorney Sullivan.
Yep. Where Bob looks for assistance. If he does, I'll fill in. But we're starting with Bob in regards to how we enforce the zoning ordinance.
Sure. Before we get into that, there's one current event I'd like to bring the planning board up to date on. And that is after you voted on Thursday last evening to instruct the planning department or the planning director not to enter a site view agreement with 150 Greenlee Favan Realty Trust until lighting issues were satisfied for the moment. The following Tuesday after that Thursday, we were sued by 150 Greenlee Favan Realty Trust. It is maybe the seventh lawsuit arising out of that project, two of which involve the planning board. I will, I'll provide you with copies of this probably time for your next meeting. And obviously, we'll keep you apprised of how the litigation goes. The main issue raised in the newest lawsuit is that the planning board did not have authority after it had approved the site plan to take any further action with regard to that site plan. I do not believe that that's the case. I think that the action of the planning board Thursday evening was well within your authority. So we'll be arguing that as far as it has to be argued. As far as enforcement of planning and zoning ordinances, I think, and regulations, I think a good way to do it is just to kind of walk through a typical project, a project requiring site review, and tell you how it works. The first thing that happens formally is that the proposed developer comes to the planning and inspection department and fills out a building permit application, the application requiring the developer to describe in significant detail what it is that that person desires to build. Based upon that description, the planning staff makes a decision as to what, if any, types of municipal approvals are required. For every development that is for a non-residential use and for residential use over five units, I think, four, four units, one of the determinations that the planning staff makes is that the developer has to get site plan review and approval from the planning board. So along with whatever other approvals are required, the developer's instructed to come to the planning board with the site plan. Of course, the site plan is required to meet site plan regulations. And they describe what has to be on the plan, and basically, it's everything outside the building. In the early days, site plan review was pretty much limited to traffic, parking, and drainage. We've come well beyond that now. And as you know, because you see them every month, site plans are required to address a significant number of items. They include, for example, location of wetlands and buffers and the like. Once a developer has satisfied all of the requirements that were determined by the planning staff, then the developer is entitled to a building permit. Now, with regard to site review approval, when that's required, the final step prior, immediately prior to the permit, is that the developer and Dave Holden, soon to be Rick Tanter, enter a site view agreement. The site review agreement requires the developer to build the thing, the things, that the planning board has approved and nothing else. The site review agreement is bonded, is the term we use, although it's not usually a bond. We require all developers, as part of a site view agreement, to provide security, is the best way to say it, I think, that they will build what they have said they will build and nothing else. The security most frequently is a letter of credit, a letter from a bank, and we require it to be from a New Hampshire bank, that says to us, if the developer doesn't build what the developer says he or she will build, then we will make this amount of money, whatever's in the letter of credit, available to the city of Portsmouth to correct whatever is wrong. And with the signed site view agreement and security for the site view agreement, the chief building inspector, Rick Hopely, would then issue a building permit for the project. Now, the planning board's interest in that project is the site review agreement. And what happens with that is that we hold the money or the security until we are satisfied that the developer's built what the developer says he or she will build. Typically, someone, often Dave Defosis from the Public Works Department, will go to the site and look at what's been built and make sure that it is what is shown on the approved site plan and nothing else. If all the work shown on the site plan is not done, then we do not release the security. Typically, we allow a developer one drawdown, if you will, of the amount of money that we hold. We hold an amount sufficient to actually construct the entire site plan if we had to. So when the developers, say, build half of it, and we don't need that much money, then we allow a drawdown, maybe half. Only one per developer, because there's administrative effort required to do these drawdowns. Somebody has to go and look at the site, et cetera. And since at any given point in time, we have numerous projects going on in the city, we're just not administratively able to handle more than one drawdown of the site view agreement. We do not release all of the funds until Dave Defosis or somebody like that has told us that all of the work is done. Now, that system, when it comes to site plans, is virtually foolproof. In 26 years that I have been here, I do not remember ever anything of significance that a developer was required to build based upon a site plan that did not get built. We have on occasion called the letters of credit. Dave and I have done this together, walked in our bank and taken $100,000 out of a developer's bank account. We did that one day.
Had a heck of a time, too.
To, you know, to complete site review improvements. And on a couple of occasions, such as the former Schultz's.
Brewery.
Brewery building, we actually took that money and Dave Defosis retained contractors to finish the site plan. It's an excellent system, doesn't fail. And so, compliance with site plans is virtually complete always. The system is not as good on the zoning side, because we don't bond, and I don't think we could bond, every project that required some kind of a zoning approval. So what happens there is that after the board of adjustment has approved the project or the planning staff has determined that board of adjustment approval is not necessary, then a building permit is issued authorizing someone to build what is shown on the building permit application. Nothing more, nothing less. We then operate after that primarily upon a complaint system. If we hear from a neighbor, often, that the construction is not in accordance with the approved site, approved building permit, then we have a variety of ways of making that. Construction comply with the building permit. Dave and I have gone to the sites many times, made the decision ourself. I recall one time, we were up on a roof last summer.
Actually, you were on the roof and I was protecting the ladder so you could get down afterwards.
Made the determination that the work was not in compliance with the building permit, and we actually fined the contractor that day $5,000 on the spot. We also have brought civil actions in Superior Court. The statutes allow us to get injunctions to stop people from building something they don't have a permit for or to comply with the permit if they're building something that's not shown in the building permit application. We've done this occasionally, too. The practical enforcement mechanism in these situations is, begins with Jason Page. Jason Page is retained primarily to be a zoning enforcement officer. He is attached administratively to the city's legal department. He is a very conscientious and energetic individual. And when complaints are made, Jason is out there right away. And he's aware of the various different enforcement tools that we have. And we have, you know, really good luck when we are aware of violations. Sometimes, people don't build what they say they were going to build. And that's, those are the harder cases for us. We need, we don't know about them unless we, somebody calls or, in some instances, people just happen to see, people connected with the city will happen to see something and be aware that it's not what was approved. For example, members of the zoning board will call. And they'll be familiar with a particular project, and they'll see something that wasn't what they approved, they'll call us. We find out lots of different other ways. Oddly enough, if there's a fire in a building, a lot of city officials will go to that site and we sometimes find out that way. So the issue with the zoning violations is that we do not have as complete a system for inspection as we do for site plan issues. So sometimes, you know, we have that problem in enforcement, we don't, we don't become aware of the violations. But when we do become aware of the violations, we have a lot of tools and have a pretty good record, I think, of bringing about compliance. We have, one going on right now, today, down on Islington Street, somewhere down near the breadbox, somebody got a building permit to convert an existing older building to apartment units, more apartment units. And the zoning ordinance of the city has a special provision in it that gives a density bonus if a person converts an older building rather than knock it down and build a new building. And the purpose of that zoning section is to preserve older buildings. Well, we have an individual who, under the guise, I think, of converting a building, got a building permit for four units when only two would have been allowed if it was a new building. And in this particular case, a neighbor called and said, "It doesn't look like that building's being converted. It looks like that building has been demolished and a new one is being built." So we're very actively involved in bringing about a correction in that situation now. We have brought about corrections of lots of situations over the years. And I would urge not only everybody on the planning board, but everybody in the city, when they think something is awry, to give us a call. Call my office or call Dave's office, and we can get right on it. And we would. So that's basically how the system works. Any questions about any particular parts of it? Sure, John.
I have a question. So basically, this deposit or this, these monies that the developer gives the city to ensure that is a bond, what if the developer, and this must have happened, the developer says, "Well, I've done, I've built everything that I said I was going to do, just like the plan." The city says, "No, it's, it's not, that's not it." Is there?
In that circumstance, we would not release the money.
Does it go to Interpleter?
You know, we do hundreds of these every year. And there's never been one that got beyond the stage of, "We'll release the money when you're done with what you said you would do." There's never been any litigation over it.
There's generally no argument about it.
Yeah.
Because we have the signed plan that showed what they were going to do.
John?
You had said the building permit process is, gets issued, and you build what is shown on the application. And I understand that, if I understand what you said correctly, there actually are very strong mechanisms in place for the building permit side of it versus the site plan side.
Well, actually, the site plan's stronger, because in the site plan situation, we're holding money. In the building permit application situation, we're not holding money.
Okay. I was a little confused, because it seemed like there was more power on the building permit side than the site plan side.
No, I think the site plan is the more secure system.
Okay.
And explain about, you know, the different roles here, like owner, developer, contractor. Because the example that you gave, you said you find the contractor.
Well, the, it's actually the owner that signs a site view agreement. And it's the owner against whom we're holding the money. But it's the contractor who does the work. And so, we typically deal with the contractor. But if we say to the owner, "We're not releasing your money until your contractor does what's on this plan."
Right.
It achieves the same result.
Do we keep track of repeat offenders?
Well, you know, this is a city, but it's not New York City. And we are able to keep track of everybody pretty well. We do know who the repeat offenders are and frankly, watch them more carefully.
Would it not be useful for this board to know who the repeat offenders are and to understand that as we begin to review plans?
I'm a little leery. And here's why. In a site view situation, the responsibility of the planning board is to determine whether or not any particular site plan satisfies the previously adopted objective criteria contained in the site review regulations. You know, that is your job. It's quasi-judicial in nature. You're required to enter into this job neutral and to make your decision based upon what you see and what's presented to you. I think that if the planning staff or myself were to come to you ahead of time and say, "That's a bad guy," then we would upset that system. And so, I actually don't think you should know other than, you know, what you see in reading the newspaper.
I think it's also important to point out, too, that under our system, it's really more or less voluntary compliance. We assume that everyone's in support of these things. We assume that you will do what you're going to do. Because if you're going to go the other way, then you've got to hire a lot of enforcement. You've got to hire a lot of inspectors, and you really change the whole tone of the, I don't want to call it a game, but the process. It isn't perfect, but I think it does more or less ramble through in the case of the normal building permit, normal building process. What you might want to explain, though, Bob, a little bit is what happens when we end up in court. Because there, it's really a whole different field, and we sort of get into a potential quagmire there. And a lot of our best work, I think, is working with someone to avoid court. But once you're in there, you have to go a different route.
In land use zoning enforcement situations, the state laws allow a number of different enforcement mechanisms. There is a way that parties or cities and towns can bring sort of criminal actions in a district court. That requires by statute that a particular kind of notice be given to the offender and followed up with a criminal complaint. For historical reasons, years ago, the city had some trouble trying to enforce the zoning ordinance in district court. So we sort of abandoned that approach. And we abandoned it in favor of something else that's allowed by state statute. And that is that Superior Courts can issue injunctions, orders, orders to contractors, property owners, anybody that's violating land use regulations, requiring them to do the right thing. And that's our chosen method, because we've been successful with it. And we get, you know, you can get fairly quick orders, immediate orders, from the district court, within a week or 10 days, maybe of filing a complaint. And so, that's what we do. And then we have the power of the court behind our orders. And, you know, it gets the work done. It's a good approach. We've gotten really good support from the courts over the years. Frankly, some judges are a little more supportive than others, but in general, it works pretty You know, there's, there are exceptions. I'd have to say, this Toyota business that we're involved in has been an exception where we've had problems in Superior Court. But that battle's far from over. And we've actually, you know, won the last couple rounds, as you know, because they involve the planning board. They attempted to remove this, the issues raised by Attorney Griffin, they attempted to remove them from the planning board by one action in Superior Court, and the judge denied that. And then they asked the Superior Court judge to issue orders to the planning board, carefully circumscribing what you would be able to do when you heard the matter last Thursday. And that request, too, was denied. So it seems like the tide may be turning a little bit in Superior Court. And anyway, we have all kinds of litigation in front of us with those people. And, you know, that's kind of the exception to the rule. Ordinarily, we do pretty well, and we do pretty well quickly.
I think an important element, too, to add to this is, we have numerous cases that eventually end up in court, as it seems to be a common recourse. But there's close coordination between the planning department and Bob, for example, to prepare the records. There's an immense amount of staff time that'll go in, for example, with Mary preparing a board of adjustment, Liz preparing an HDC, Jane doing a planning board or a TAC. So I think what you might not realize in enforcement is how much close coordination there is between multiple departments, inspections, planning, public works, and particularly the legal department.
John?
Bob, I just wanted to clarify something. You said, when the site review agreement is signed, it requires a developer to build what is agreed to.
That's pretty much what it says.
Right.
Either developer will build what was approved.
Right. Now, for the sake of discussion, what mechanisms do we have, or does the city have, if someone builds something that was not agreed to, not under the building permit thing, but under the site review?
We have two things. The most important of which is, we've got that money that we're holding. And, you know, we say, you know, "You tear down the thing that wasn't approved, or we'll tear it down with your money." And we also have available to us, if necessary, this exact same injunction process in Superior Court as we would for a zoning violation. It is not an issue, but there is kind of something maybe you should be aware of. The site view agreement is signed by the original developer, and we hold that money against the original developer. Therefore, we can make the original developer do what the person said he or she would do and hold him to that. When projects change hands, however, so that a third or a fourth owner down the line owns a, you know, a gas station, and that person did not enter a site view agreement with us, and we do not hold any money as a bond against that person, then those situations, it's a different, it's a more difficult situation for us to retain strict compliance with the plan. However, even in that situation, we can, we can stay close to the mark, because if that third or fourth or fifth owner down the road wants to make any significant changes to the site, then they have to come in and get site view approval. If, you know, a small thing, like, you know, the, some bushes that were required in the landscaping plan die or are removed, well, we might lose that. But we're not going to allow them to build another building that wasn't shown, so.
But, if I may, just, I always thought that it went with the property, not with the owner, a site review plan. So if a guy sells a project, that halfway through, that site review plan and agreement, I always thought went with the property.
Well, the site view agreement is a contract, a contract between the city and the developer or the property owner. And therefore, it's strongest, it's most easy to enforce against the person who signed it. The third or fourth owner down the line, 15 years later, who never signed any agreement, doesn't have a contract with the city, and we don't have one with them. So that makes it a more difficult enforcement situation.
But there's a disconnect in there. I'm thinking in terms of a developer that doesn't build what they agreed to.
Well, the original developer, we're holding the money. We always get the original developer.
Okay. But halfway through, he sells it, and the second person finishes the project and doesn't do it according to the site view.
If the project is sold halfway through, we're still holding that money. Do you not release?
John, let's put it also this way, we haven't had a problem with it.
We don't release the money till the work's done, regardless of who's owning it at the time.
The bigger problem would be something that changes in the plan, many owners in the future. But we've not had the problem you're defining with a project changing during the time.
Okay. I was just trying to get the connection between that, that's all. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
How is the size of the bond determined?
The, in two ways. The developer is asked to present what they think is the amount of money necessary to complete the site view, and then that figure is reviewed and approved by the city's Public Works Department. Dave Defosis typically.
Well, when you say site review agreement, and you're kind of switching between developer and owner, that site review agreement is held with the owner?
That's always with the owner.
Okay, okay.
You know, usually, the owner is the developer, and they hire a contractor.
Right.
But in every case, I really mean the owner when I'm talking about site review agreement or bond.
Any other que, no?
Well, is it landscaping that's usually the problem here?
Landscaping?
Well, I'm, because I can think of, that's where things maybe fall apart, or the next person doesn't do what was required. Or, I mean, are there aspects of this that are the places, I mean, are there aspects of the site review that are the, are the places that are typically the problem areas? Or is that not?
White Birch Plaza on Route 1 South was approved as White Birch Plaza because it had a row of white birches right along Route 1. That project sold, and it sold again. And some, some of the subsequent owner down the line on a Saturday went and cut down all the white birches that were just gone. So, you know, that's an example where, you know, we, hey, we lost the white birches, they're gone right now. We had another problem with a tree out in Durgan, Durgan Lane, it was a cherry tree or something, which we actually managed to get somebody to put that one back in. Bushes die, and I actually think that probably the area where we have the most problems down the road and future owners does involve landscaping and trees. Most people don't even think about the city if they want to, you know, remove the bushes in the front yard. And so, that's the thing. And it's small enough, bushes or a tree, that, you know, we do not give up the entire city government to go out after it. Whereas something bigger, we would. Nobody would be allowed to pave more of their parking lot, for example.
Interesting. Any other questions for Attorney Sullivan? Thank you, Bob. It's always informative and easy to understand, so. Is that all we have for Bob?
Yep.
Great. Well, thank you. I guess we'll turn it over now to Rick Tanter from Tanter &amp; Associates. You don't need to stick around for the rest of the meeting. You don't need to stick around. Thank you.
No, no, just me.
Okay.
It's on.
This is the, we talked a couple weeks ago about, maybe last week, about the, two weeks ago, I guess, about the Business Corridor District, and we talked about LEED for neighborhood development being one of the criteria that we might want to consider. We, if you recall, we talked about Energy Star, and we talked about LEED building standards, and we talked about LEED for neighborhood development. And I suggested that maybe the, it would be good to have a brief overview of the LEED system so that you can understand what it is, that kind of the relative level of difficulty and comprehensiveness that there is in this system. And it will be an overview. The entire LEED ND rating system book is over 90 pages. And what you have in front of you is the two-page score sheet that is what is submitted as kind of the basic scoring mechanism for getting a certification. I'm really going to do a pretty brief overview and get you out of here or get you done as soon as possible. I do, in much of this, I'm going to be going over things at a sort of superficial level, just talking about what the type of requirements there are. And in a few cases, I'm going to dig in and just show you an example of what they are. So the LEED ND is one of a number of LEED rating systems. There's LEED for new construction, there's LEED for residential development, there's a number of different things. And LEED ND is a little bit unusual in that it's developed by these three groups. Most of them are developed by the US. Most of them are developed by the U.S. Green Building Council. But this is developed as a partnership with the Natural Resources Defense Council, so you know where they're coming from, and with the Congress for New Urbanism, which is an organization of architects and planners that is really oriented around pedestrian scale development and form, design of buildings and so forth. And actually, the slide is a little bit outdated. I started the slide looking at the June 2007 version, but they came out with a new version in October of 2008. So actually, what I'm going to be describing here is actually the October 2008 version, which is not the pilot version, it's the post-pilot version, I think is what they're calling it. And the goals of LEED, LEED neighborhood development are, as shown here, revitalizing urban areas, reducing land consumption, reducing automobile dependence, promoting pedestrian activity, improving air quality, improving stormwater quality, and using water efficiently. So it's a lot of what we've been talking about in terms of things we're interested in are zoning ordinance. And the term neighborhood development is a little bit misleading, because the project sites can be whole neighborhoods, or they can be portions of neighborhoods, they can be multiple neighborhoods, they can be big mixed-use developments, or they can be small individual sites within larger neighborhoods. And as you see, they did a pilot program with about 250 pilots across the country, looking at whether this system was going to work, or how, or what the issues might be. And the pilot projects range from a fifth of an acre to almost 13,000 acres. So it's a big range of things. And the pilot is done now, and they're evaluating the results of that, and that's why the October version of this rating system has come out. And there are three stages at which any development can actually get its certification. They can do it before any approvals are made. This is actually to get the formal certification from the Green Building Institute. They can get the approval during the planning process and say, okay, if you do it exactly like this, you'll get this rating. You can do it after a plan has been approved, you know, gone through the whole site plan review process, or you can do it when it's done. And so different projects are doing it at different stages. Some of the ones that were pilots were already essentially done before the pilot started. And just so you know how LEED works, this is true for all of the different LEED rating systems. There are prerequisites under different categories, and there are credits under different categories. So in order to get a LEED rating, you have to meet all of the prerequisites under all of the categories, and you have to get enough credits in some of the optional things to get a certain level of a score. So it's like a basic threshold in a scoring system. So the sheet that you have in front of you, you can see, for example, on the top level on the smart location, there are six things that you actually have to do. And then there are another nine things that are options, and you mix and match. So you don't have to do all of those things, you do the things that make sense for your development. So if you're doing something in an area that's previously been developed, you might choose some different credits than if you're doing something in an area that has not been developed yet. So, and this is how it works out. There are five categories in the current system. There used to be only four categories. The new system that came out in October had five categories. And you need to get at least 40 points in order to be certified at any level out of a total of 110. So you only need to get about a third of the total possible points to be certified. And you can see that 27 possible points come from where you're locating your development and kind of a broad scale, and then 44 possible points come in terms of how you design the site and the pattern, and then about 29 points are possible from designing buildings or sewer and water or drainage, that sort of thing. And then there are two other things that don't give you very many points. One is innovation and design process, and those are just saying if you've done something much better than what we say is the standard here, you can get another point. Or if you're doing something really special in a category you don't have here, you can get a point. And then there are, in different regions of the country, there'll be special priorities that will be set up, and they haven't really been defined yet, I don't think. So this is basically the overall system. You can see there are 13 prerequisites that you have to meet in three categories: the location and linkage, pattern and design, and green infrastructure and buildings. And then there are 43 credits that give you a potential total of 110 points. It's a very complicated system, but the reason I'm showing you this is because to give you the sense that there are lots of choices in this. You can do, there's no particular way to do a green development, you can do it in lots of different ways. You can focus on energy, you can focus on environment, you can focus on pedestrians, all different types of things. So these are the, and they're basically, I don't have to go through these all because I've given them to you in the handout, but there are, as I said, six prerequisites in the smart location and linkage category. And I'm just going to focus a little bit on the first one, the smart location. And this gives you a sense of the kinds of choices that you're given. So under smart location, to meet that prerequisite, there are actually five different ways you could do that. You could either locate on a site that is an infill site, and they define what that is, and sort of a site that is a vacant piece of land surrounded by current development. You could locate on a transit line such that at least half the dwelling units and business entrances are within a quarter mile to a bus or a streetcar stop, or a half a mile walk to rapid transit. So, you know, it's like they're trying to say, okay, it doesn't have to be infill, but it could be, as long as you can go to a public transportation. A third one is to locate on a site that is next to existing development that has a large number of intersections and provide, so you have a lot of walking, it's a very good place for walking. Or the fourth one is you can locate near multiple diverse uses. They define a list of diverse uses, which I'll show you in a second. And they say you can be within a quarter mile to five of those uses, or within a half a mile to seven of those uses, and you have to kind of mix and match. Or you could be in a transportation analysis zone, which is a technical transportation planning term, where your local vehicle miles traveled per person are lower than the regional average. So there's lots of possibilities for doing that. And so in option four, with the multiple diverse uses, these are the uses. So it's under retail, convenience store, florist, hardware store, pharmacy, supermarket, other retail. So you could, going back, yes.
Just, could you flip back one? Just so I can understand this. If I am going, this is a required thing for LEEDs, which is smart location.
Yes.
So under smart location, I can choose any one of these five options, and that meets the target?
That meets the prerequisite.
Good, got it, thank you.
And so remember here, in option four, a quarter mile to five uses or a half mile to seven uses. So if you were within--
Any bonus for doing two or three of those?
What's that?
Is there any bonus for doing two or three?
It comes in later.
Okay.
Yeah, it comes in as a credit. It comes in, if you look at your sheet, it comes in under preferred locations, credit number one. And I'll talk about that when we get there. But so you've got all these things. So you could do, you know, a florist, hair care, coffee shop, police station, and public park. And if they were all within a quarter mile, then you'd have met that criterion. So it's just, you know, that's one of the things you can do. So you can see here, obviously, you know, this is really easy to do if you're in a downtown location. If you're out on the, if you're out further out, you have to have other things to make it work. Then again, another example of choices, the second one, water, wastewater, you have two options. You're either on a site, and these are much more simple, you're either on a site served by an existing water and wastewater infrastructure, or you're within an area that has been legally adopted as a planned area for water and wastewater, and you provide that. So it's basically, they don't want you to be developing outside an existing or a planned infrastructure.
Can you define legally adopted?
It would be something if you had, in some places where there are growing areas, it wouldn't necessarily be the same situation as Portsmouth, but in, say, in the Midwest. You're expanding out from a community into the countryside, they define like a sewer service area.
It's like a zoning and sort of thing?
It's not in a zoning, it's actually, it would be done through the county commission or something like that, would define this as an area within which we have decided we're going to expand sewer, and beyond that, we won't.
Okay.
So then we get to the credits, and we have, you know, you go through the same thing, and there's, you can see that the big credit thing here is these preferred locations, which goes to your question, Don, about can you get more credits for the same type of thing? And I'll give you that example about the preferred locations in just a second, but you can see there, you get different amounts of credits for doing different things, and we don't have enough time to go through all the options for all of these. So I just wanted to give you those as some examples, and you have these in your handout. But here, for example, is in the preferred location. That's the question you were asking, Don? And so if you've met that, one of those five criteria for the prerequisite for smart location, then you can get additional credits for one of these locations. And these are and/or things. So you could get five points for being in an infill site that was previously developed. So you've got a, you're surrounded by development, there is an old strip mall, you redeveloped that strip mall to something bigger that is also green in some way, that meets all the other criteria, you automatically get five points for doing that. Then if you're within a mile radius of neighborhoods that have a certain density, and they've got these different levels of connectivity, then you get additional points. So if you were on a, and I'll give you an example of this in just a second, because it's kind of hard to visualize. But if you're in an infill site and you were in a neighborhood, adjacent or near a neighborhood that had 200 to 300 intersections per square mile, you get five points for the infill site, plus one point for being near that neighborhood. And so it just adds up. And what I did is I actually looked at a bunch of neighborhoods in Portsmouth--
That's great.
--and tried to get a sense of what these areas were. And so I looked at the area near here, Middle Street and Lincoln Avenue, and then I also looked at Elwin Park, and I also looked at the area around South Gate Plaza and Walmart. And so, and I haven't finished doing all the calculations yet, so I've got question marks here, but Middle Street, Lincoln Avenue is 222 intersections per square mile, the way I calculated it. I might not be exactly right, but that's what I came up with. When you add up all the intersections in that image, divided by the number of, by the area of that image, that's what you get. So that one would be, whoops, that would meet the one point. That would get you one point if you were, that was the area around you, yes.
Did you literally count every intersection in that photo? Or is there some computer?
No, no, I just, there aren't that many, it's just right here. This is--
I'm thinking more the upper right one.
Yes.
Oh, that is that?
That is that, it's the same one.
Okay, that's without the building.
So it's just a quarter square mile. And so I just took that, and so I ended, what I do, I did 70 intersections, so it doesn't take that long.
Okay, yeah.
Especially if you've got a red marker. So I, you know, you've got that. And then you look at Elwin Park, it's only got 135. Elwin Park doesn't even, it's a nice urban neighborhood, it doesn't meet the minimum standard for connectivity. The minimum standard is 150. Then you get one point for 200. But, so it's interesting to see, and that's why, you know, I looked at those three, to see the different kinds of neighborhoods you have in here. So you wouldn't use Elwin Park necessarily as a, to qualify you for that smart location or preferred location standard, you'd have to use something else. But if you were closer to Middle Street, closer to here, you'd be able to--
I'm actually having trouble understanding why much more than 200 intersections per square mile would be considered a good thing--
I have to explain this to you.
--because of all the pavements.
Actually, the definition of intersections actually is what's important, and it doesn't really apply here. But they define as intersections, public bike paths, there are public pedestrian paths that cross, that intersect a street. So if you had a, if you had mid-block pedestrian paths or bike paths and that kind of thing, they add up, they add to the qualification. You just don't have that kind of development pattern here, but you could do that in a very denser urban area.
Is the theory that the more intersections you have, that it discourages driving?
No, the theory is the more intersections you have, the easier it is to walk from one place to another, because you don't have to go around large blocks, you can go, find your way through small blocks.
And you said those intersections also include bike paths, walking paths, that sort of thing? So if your number is high, chances are there's biking and pedestrian in there as well?
Yes.
Okay.
If Elwin Park had sidewalks, it would probably meet it.
What's that?
If Elwin Park had sidewalks--
No, the sidewalks have to be separate from the intersection. So you've got, you actually have to look at each place individually. So you wouldn't count all the sidewalks coming into an intersection separately.
But just, if I may, just digressing, as one who walks around Elwin Park daily, I can't tell you the number of times I've been stopped by motorists who are lost. So it seems to me that there isn't adequate, you know, there may be too many intersections just the same.
Well, it could be the curvature of the roads, the design of the intersection. But that was just a good--
Rick, excuse me, just keeping in mind the amount of time, I don't know--
I'm trying to move through this, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
An example, you get someplace like this, which is 28 intersections per square mile. It's just a very different kind of place, it isn't very pedestrian framework. So that's the idea. Then there are, then going down to the different ones, I will, as I say, I won't go through them all, because you have them all listed here, but you've got the prerequisites for neighborhood pattern design, and you've got the credits, the options, lots of those. And then just as one example, looking at walkable streets, there's a prerequisite for walkable streets, and there's a credit for walkable streets. And so the prerequisite is you have to have your principal entry facing a public space, which could be a sidewalk or a street or something like that, and you have to have your ratio of building height to street width be at least one to three for at least 20% of all the street footage. So it's just basically trying to create that street wall. And then there are a number of things, there's 15 different pedestrian-oriented features, and depending on the number of them you get, you can get different numbers of points for credits. And, you know, the things include things like large display windows or public cars, I'm not sure what they all are, but we have them all. Then you can get, there are prerequisites for doing green buildings and for getting points for green buildings and infrastructure. You can see historic building preservation and adaptive use is one point, existing building reuse, if you reuse an existing building, you get a point for that, and if it's a historic building, you get a point for that too. So keep going, lots of things. I mentioned the innovation and design process and the regional priority credits. And then, again, going back to the summary again, there are, you can get just 40, 40 points gives you the basic certification. That's all, that was the way we wrote it, is to say you can be certified, and that would be to meet the minimum criterion. And just to point out what the highest scoring things are in the system. The walkable streets, you can get a total maximum of 12 points for that, 10 points for the preferred locations, that's the combination of infill and street connectivity, reduced automobile dependence, mixed-income diverse communities, compact development, certified green building, et cetera. So you can see where the priorities are in this system. And what they've done is they drafted this system in 2007, they did a pilot project, and they had about 250 projects across the country. They revised the rating system in 2008, and they're going, in 2009, there are certain groups that can vote on the system, and there's going to be a ballot on the system, and then they're going to launch the full pilot program sometime later this spring, I think, is their timeline. And just to give you one example, this is a, this is one of the first neighborhood, if not the first, neighborhood development project that was certified. It's outside, it's a suburb of Minneapolis, and it's, this is the site plan and a rendering of what it was going to look like, but you can see it has lots of stuff there. It's got 300 apartments, 65,000 square feet of retail, it's got a parking garage that is a joint public-private partnership for a transit station, it's got a public park and amphitheater on the top. But it was this kind of worn-out strip molly kind of place before, and it's become, and this is actually not just renderings, but actually existing pictures of it now. And you can see, it actually was aiming, it was trying to get, I don't know whether it finally did get, but it was trying to get 45 points, and it was trying to get 16 points in smart location and linkage, 23 for neighborhood pattern design, et cetera, et cetera. And on the left is what it did look like, and on the right is what it looks like now. So it's the kind of thing, it really is somewhat applicable to what we're talking about on Route 1. The question would be, you know, whether we have enough, we might want to look a little bit more at the LEED criteria to see whether, what I'd like to do is see if it's possible to get a LEED certified building, say on the South Gate Plaza site, because that would be the kind of the telling point, as to whether we should include it in the zoning or not.
So if one is to do this LEED certification, what does this do for the developer other than put that little sticker on the building that said, "This is a LEED certified building"? Increased density, where's the linkage?
Well, that was the thing we talked about a couple of weeks ago, is that we're trying to provide, we're setting up a system that would provide increased density, and what we're asking for in return are some positive benefits to the city.
Right.
And so one of the benefits we might get is this. Another thing that happens, though, is that people are now marketing their developments as green developments. And so that actually kind of increases the cachet and perhaps the rental cost.
You know, with like the housing trust fund that we're trying to develop, if we were to loan, do a loan to a developer to help develop something like that, we could have it as a criteria that would meet these pre-approval. I mean, I see it being able to be leveraged in a lot of different ways.
Because I just sort of chuckle when I see these points, it reminds me of Scrabble, where you look at yourself, and it's, okay, I got 10 points here and 12 points there, and if I use this one, I do that one. But it makes sense, it really does.
Anthony, did you have a question?
Does LEED actually come out then, or will they come out and certify? Or is it they present the criteria and you just try to meet it, and if you meet it on your own, you can say you're LEED certified? Or does--
No, you actually have to get certified by the U.S. Green Building Council.
Okay.
And so what you do is you submit the score sheet, and you submit your documentation to support the score sheet. And then, it hasn't actually been set up, because it isn't in full, it's only been in a pilot project right now, but there'll be a process, and there will probably be regional boards that will be reviewing this and passing on it.
Rick, would it be possible to get copies of that slide presentation for us?
Sure, yep.
I mean, I can see everybody was pretty well engaged in that, it was very interesting. -in that, it was very interesting, maybe even a follow-up meeting at some point.
Sure.
You know, it would be so interesting, I could see this as the way to engage people during our next master planning process around their neighborhood, like, understanding their own neighborhoods from this point of view, so that we know the kinds of things that we're asking for, that you understand it within your own space, you know, and what the trade-offs are. We were just talking about, what a fabulous game for like high school students to understand environmental issues, SimCity, you know?
Man, you know, I look at Elwin Park, just, and I happen to live there, but I've noticed more people that are biking from Elwin Park, the Woodlands, to DeMullis, they're dropping their videos off there, I mean, I see a huge connection across Lafayette Road just from Elwin Park that's been there for 60 years.
Yeah.
One of the things that's interesting, and that I was finding, looking, comparing this Middle Street, Lincoln Ave area to Elwin Park, is that when you look at the density of, the, the pattern of structures, it seems very similar, but it's the road width-
Yeah.
-is so much wider-
Exactly.
-and also the curving road, so it uses up much more land.
Yeah.
And so you've got a much more, essentially, efficient use of land in the older developments than you do in the, in the newer developments.
Well, and I think this would help so much, those people who are having this knee-jerk reaction to density, because they think of it as all bad, they don't really see what these elements are. So to really look at it, and really think about it as it relates to different neighborhoods, could be so much fun.
One of the things that I, that I also found in doing my research was Davidson County, Tennessee, which is Nashville area, has come out with a, what they call a community character manual, and they've done something like this, but they basically define different types of urban forms for their entire jurisdiction, and they're going to use that as the basis for their master plan.
I went to the workshop on that at the APA conference two years ago, and the people from that community were there, and it was really interesting. And there were very simple things that people wanted to have done in some neighborhoods that really described character for their neighborhood, and then in another neighborhood, it was very, it was very different, but they, it was very grand, it was very process-oriented, very from the ground, you know, it was very exciting.
Well, I can't thank you, Rick, we've got about five minutes, and I think before we get to get up on the big table, but I, I could see there could be a follow-up meeting, maybe once we get all the zoning rewrites and master plan items out, maybe some time in the summer or something, have a, a follow-up meeting.
It's going to happen?
A meeting on the-
Something's going to be done?
So, Rick, thank you so much, and if we want to take a five-minute break, and then